Good evening, everyone. We will commence with our Mary Perry municipal authority meeting. Yeah, I was trying to get residents in this town here. It is 6:15. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Here.
Dow.
Here.
Moxley.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Norman.
Nation.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Our invocation, please, by Brandon Armstrong.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for today. We thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. We thank you for the beautiful sunshine. Definitely pray for some rain and some moisture to come to the land, the Lord. We thank you so much for those that are working out in fields and preparing them. We just thank you for them. Father, I just looked up this group that is around this table this evening and the agenda they have before them. Father, I pray just for good decisions to be made. Thank you so much for their time and their service to this community. We just, again, lift them up and the program they have in front of them and the agenda, items they need to address this evening. Father, again, we thank you for this community and we just pray so much again for this evening. Most of all, we thank you for your Son. In your name I pray. Amen.
Mr. Mayor, the point of order, if I could tell you, today, the United States Supreme Court held that prayers prior to a legislative session, city council meetings are proper. And we've been wondering what that is, but that's what the Supreme Court held today. Today. Five-four decision. Right, five-four decision.
They said, "We got your back."
Right.
That's what this says, "We got your back."
Thank you, yes.
I think it's nice we're finally legal.
On something. Okay, first item on the agenda.
Well, it wasn't illegal, which we didn't know.
It was our consent agenda. Receive and approve minutes of the regular PMA meetings for April 24, 2014. What's your pleasure, Council?
Making motion, may I approve the consent agenda?
Second. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Takes us down to item four, comments from those assembled. Anyone wish to make comments before the PMA?
Mary, is my turn?
Actually, the next, the regular council.
Got it, thank you.
None. Item five, proclamations, commendations, reports, and inquiries by the governing body. Any reports, Mary, or anyone? Seeing none, new business before the PMA. New business. Seeing none. Item seven, Council.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes, thank you, Brandon, I appreciate you. I do now declare the opening of a regular meeting of the Perry City Council. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Here.
Dow.
Here.
Moxley.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Norman.
Nation.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
I do declare a quorum. First item, of course, is our consent agenda. There's parts A, B, C, D, and E. Does anyone like to have any of those removed for further discussion?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Now, we are, go to item four, to hear from the comments from those assembled.
Okay, thank you.
Introduce yourself, please.
You all probably read in the paper about the three...
Introduce yourself, please.
Well, I...
For the record.
Oh. I know nobody knows who I am. I'm Karen Markoff.
I can, Karen.
I'm sorry. You probably read in the Perry Daily Journal about the three GFWC clubs who are roofing the pavilions out at CCC Lakes. So, I wanted to offer you all an invitation to participate. You don't get to pass that on, Conny. That's yours.
I did read this in the paper and have witnessed people dropping off donations, including myself.
Good. So, you don't need one, is that what you're...
I'm coming. I just want one, though.
You want one?
Yep.
Did everybody get?
Thank you.
Thank you. We feel it's a really important project. And if you haven't been out there lately, the upper pavilion is already done because we had funds from leftover from last year where we raised our money. This year, we're trying to, for this below one, if you note, we're trying to raise $6,576. Randy McGar, local contractor, is doing the work on it, volunteer. It is a tax deduction because the checks are to be made out to the city of Perry. And then, we're going through the city to order the materials so that we don't have to pay tax, so we're skipping a few things. But anyway, we're hoping that you all will support this also because it's a very worthwhile cause. And just for the pat on the back, if you haven't been to CCC lately, the entrance looks wonderful. Thank you, whoever, Brenda and her group. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Appreciate it.
Do we need to donate some money for this, or has that ever been...
I think that's what she was telling you.
Okay.
Is that what you're wanting? A donation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I left mine...
I mean, that's what I heard. Did you not get that point?
Any amount is appreciated.
Yes, exactly.
I left mine at Pine Street, so make sure you get it.
Okay, thank you.
So, the city has said that they will donate 2,000, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Do we want to donate...
Plus the labor. I mean, we, the street department crews tore the old shingles off, so they've done that to get them ready to go for Randy and assisted in the purchasing of the materials. And so, as far as I know, it's, we're good to go.
It's big joy different. Randy's in Las Vegas right now, so...
Oh, good.
It won't get done until, but we need to raise some money, so.
Meredith, do we have any extra money in our tourism that we could, because I need, still need $6,000?
In this year's budget?
Oh, okay. Either, either year.
Next year or this year?
Could I say something?
Sure. From the donations that are coming in, I think you're going to make your goal.
Yeah, I really don't think that we really have a problem. And the other thing I probably need to say is if we meet our goal, the money then will go into Camp Tandaco.
Oh, wonderful.
So, it's, it's not going to be whatever, okay? It's, it's going to be one of those that once we raise the funds, then we'll put it to wherever else needs to be out there, so.
Karen, a little, we checked on the balance for the Knox Fund for Camp Tandaco, and there's $5,000.
Oh, good. Good. Well, I, I know I haven't been out there, but I have heard that it really needs a lot of care. And I think it's one of those things that is only used, like, several times a year when Camp Fire Girls go, and then other people have things too. But it's one of those things that gets put aside because it's not used as much. So, that's one of those things that we have to keep in mind that we do need to take care of also.
Out of sight, out of mind.
I talked to, I was talking to Brenda, though, today, and she said there's a Boy Scout group coming, like, 60 kids going to go out to that park camp, and they're going to camp, I don't know, camp, put tents up on both sides of the pavilion.
This particular, or the one up above?
No, that...
What, they win?
I don't know, she was telling me...
Probably Cub Scout.
It's unroofed right now, so.
They got Cub Scout.
They got probably Cub Scout.
Yeah, they're going to be in tents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from around the table or from the audience?
Yeah, I think this is great for the club student.
Next item is proclamations, commendations, reports, and inquiries by the governing body. I'd like Mary, it's probably in her report, but I, I think it's something you could say right now, and that's about promotions that she is...
I can do that in my report. You want me to?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
You were going to get the EPA out to check the old ballparks and the new ballpark area? Have you done that yet? To take some tests on the land?
I didn't always get them.
I didn't realize that.
I don't remember that.
I thought you said you were going to do that.
I said that if we had, if we decide to build there, we'll have to. And it wouldn't be the EPA, it'd be a boring company to do test holes for that. I think we've all agreed that we don't, we can't use it, and based on the history of testimonies from those who know what's in there. And I don't want to go out there trying to uncover a...
No, you don't.
Uncover something that then would be responsible to clean up right now, and couldn't afford it. Two, if you leave it alone and you do not expose those hazards to the air, then usually you're in good shape. If they were causing health issues downstream or within the neighborhood, then certainly we'd have to act, there would be no choice. Right now, I think it's trash, building materials, and stumps, trees, weeds, and leaves and stuff like that was put in there for over 40, 50 years. But this council can decide to do anything if they want to.
Okay.
But me, personally, I'm not going to direct that.
Okay.
But you are a council person, you've requested...
Well, no, I just thought that you said you were going to do that.
The new location will have geotechnical surveys done on it, so, to determine, you know, what's there. So, even though we're pretty confident, it's, it's been farmland for generations, and so pretty confident what's there. But that'll be part of the project, would be to do the geotechnical studies there.
Any other inquiries? Next item in the business, see you man to come.
Speaking of donations, Devon Energy provided some funding and, which was supplemented by our district attorney, Brian Hermanson. And if I could ask Chief Thomas to stand up and model.
Yeah, we've seen that, we've seen that video, that video you...
She knows that pretty well, doesn't she? Yeah. Did you see that?
One of these, the camera that he's wearing, all of our officers have been able to be outfitted by one of those with the donation from Devon and the funding from the district attorney. And so, it's a video, you know, it can also take, also take still shots, but it's basically, you know, started when you get out of your car, and it's video and audio, and pretty, pretty good quality of video.
It's HD quality film.
You have to manually turn it on when you get out.
Well, as you can see here, I've got this on my belt, and to turn the video on, I just hit the green button. If I want to start taking pictures, I hit the middle button. And, you know, when we're on traffic stops, we've got the mobile videos in our cars, which film that, but that's only a portion of the job. We're always going to people's houses, talking, going in, and whenever we're out in the car, these are on. And it's just a great tool. It has up to eight hours of video. So, when you're out in the car, it's just on standby mode, so it'll charge. I mean, it lasts all shift, we're not going to film eight hours on a shift, and every day we come in, download the video, start fresh again, so.
What about night vision?
It's not really equipped, not just whatever lighting you have out, so it's going to film. I wish it did, but for the cost of these, it was, you know, this is the high end, and they were $185 a piece. And you can't go really buy digital camera at Walmart. If the DA wanted us to have, anyway, to have pictures, this does it all with picture and video.
As soon as audio, like, that too, right?
Yes. It's a great tool. I mean, we're really fortunate.
I think we've seen the value of that in the past.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's professionally takes pictures with HD quality, and it's incredible, the video and the photographs that we actually take of these, so. Great tool. We were glad to get them, so.
Good.
Good.
Thank you, Chief. And Karen took my item, too. I was going to talk about the pavilion, but she did a great job, and I don't have anything more to add, other than it's a very worthy cause, and the rose on those two buildings are pretty sad, so, anyway. The ones, the hilltop one looks really, really good, so.
Pulls right through, you can see sunlight, so.
Over the last couple of months, we've been getting inquiries about chickens, people being able to have chickens in their backyards and inside the city limits. And which, I think the code has a provision for fowl, but I don't know, it doesn't have a provision, or is it totally prohibited?
Yeah, there's a provision, but it's virtually...
Impossible.
Impossible to, to meet the provision.
Right. The square footage that you'd have to have and all of that. So, anyway, and I've been hearing about other communities that have been considering these kinds of requests, and I'm not talking just small communities, I'm talking Edmond, Oklahoma City, you know, other, other locations. And, you know, it's becoming more of a, you know, the green initiative, I think, is kind of coming through in terms of, you know, providing for yourself and that sort of thing. And so, this has really kind of prompted us to think, to wonder how this would fly in Perry, you know? But what would...
No pun intended.
No cloud play.
Yeah. So, I would just like to ask residents to let us know what your thoughts are. You know, you can put a little note in your bill, which, we get a lot of those notes anyway, so just put a little note in your bill, call us at City Hall, say, "Yes, chickens, no chickens," you know, which is kind of like some feedback.
No roosters, though, right?
No roosters, yeah. It'd be, it'd only be chickens, so no roosters. Because they're loud and toxic, so.
That's just not right.
And they chase people.
Well, how are you going to...
So, let us know. So, if this is something, let us know. Kind of give them some, give us some feedback.
Or we're going to get chickens.
Well, you know.
So, you've had people ask if they can, or people saying they already do?
Well, I think that there are some that already do, but I don't want to, you know, but, but we have had inquiries about whether they can, and it's been mostly positive. I mean, it's not been complaints about others that do have chickens. It's been mostly positive, so, you know, wondered if that was something that, you know, that this feedback would help us decide whether it's something for the city council to take up as an idea.
Yes.
Just a quick personnel update. We have openings, full-time positions, equipment operator in the street department, and this is the time of year we need every able-bodied person in the street department. So, hopefully, there's some folks out there that could, that we could put to work. Journeyman lineman in the electric department, and also meter reader. So, one of our meter readers has gone out to the cemetery to work with Rita at the cemetery, so. Part-time position, summer help for mowing and lifeguards at the pool. Recent, see, last Friday, we, or last week, we had promotional testing for lieutenant in the police department, and for the, there were two candidates for the position. Both were so worthy that we decided to promote both of them. So, Sergeant, Sergeant Carson and Sergeant Odell have both been promoted to lieutenant. And we'll do a little bit of reorganizing, but I think this is an excellent move. They've been with the department for many years, have proved their dedication to the department, to the community, and so we congratulate them on that promotion.
I only have one comment to say about that. They're not worth a darn getting skunks out of your garage. I had them both over here one night.
You had a turkey in your backyard Friday morning?
Yeah, the house did.
No chickens? You want to watch the chickens, I mean?
Pushing it below. I just want to put a pin of them up on top of the garage.
Pin house for chickens?
Yeah, but then you'd have to scoop.
No, it was hose.
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 I think they're both very worried. That's a good move.
Yes, like I say, you know, it was, it was one of those, it was a win-win. I mean, we, you know, no matter which direction we went, it was good that we didn't want to disappoint the other, and we know that they both could, you know, they have their own areas of interest and that they both can contribute a great deal to the department and to the community.
Cool.
And that's all I have?
They're good officers, great officers.
What's the status of the mic change? First ball field signed?
It's being made. It's been ordered, we're waiting on it to, for it to be delivered, and then it will be put up. We'll be talking with Mrs. Sattler before we actually put it up, to see if she would like to go out there and be a part of that.
Chambers, Mrs. Chambers.
Well, her letter was signed June Chambers Sattler.
Oh, okay.
So, that's how I refer to her.
She remarried. She remarried.
Yes.
And where are we at on John Vance?
John Vance? I might defer that to our attorney.
Oh, we are setting up the development committee meeting. We are, we've received the report on the, from the engineering firm on the access road. We have gotten notice from ODOT about the, about the access road.
The frontage road.
About the frontage road, what the cost of the property is occurring. I would say that, that, that at least getting that through, presented and through the development committee will occur at the front end of May, you know, by, say, May 15, or let me see, it's the 5th, but the front end of May, we hope to get that approved. The other person that had a vote is willing, under the, under the covenants, is willing to waive the 14-day time requirement. And so, if that gets waived, it'll be done way in the front of May. So, that's where that is.
Any other comments, questions, on the senior? Thank you. Item seven, now this, give me a little chance here to read all this. I've been trying to practice it, wordy, but it has to be done, you all know. But this has to do with our, our United Healthcare and the fees and taxes that are assigned due to the Affordable Care Act and the decreased cost by the provider. Consider approval of a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Perry, Oklahoma, that being approving city group health insurance plan, namely, United Healthcare Plan 2T4, or approving manual of, or excuse, approving Mutual of Omaha to provide 10,000 term life insurance policies for employees, establishing the rates to be paid by members of this city's group insurance program, providing such changes shall be effective January, or July 4th, I'm trying to get a holiday in here, July 1, 2014, reauthorizing a worksite benefit plan, authorizing the execution of health reimbursement agreement, IRC 10, setting an effective designated amount to be included in the budget for administrative costs, benefits for such plan, reauthorizing the cafeteria benefit plan, including medical and/or dependent care flex spending account, effective July 1, 2014, reapproving Ashino, Huddleson, and Associates as broker. As we have talked about earlier, this is to provide the health insurance for the employees on a monthly premium basis, provide, provide that city as a maximum of $571.03 toward monthly, employee monthly benefit for their family health insurance, provides that the city will pay premium of 10,000 term life insurance policy for each employee, we understand that, reauthorize the work benefit plan, reauthorize the cafeteria plan, and reappoint the consultant broker that we have to continue to be our broker. Discussion, or do you have a motion?
I have a question. On the 10,000 term life insurance, would that pay also if they're hurt on the job? Or is that a different?
That's workers' compensation. It's a completely, that's a completely different type of insurance policy. This just pays in the event of death.
Period.
They fell over dead, then?
Motion to approve.
Motion in second for resolution to, for the resolution. Roll call.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Item eight's going to be easy for me, presentation of the draft 2014-2015 budget. Meredith?
Me, already? Not even through Mary? All right. Okay, so what you have, you've got the initial draft. This is actually probably the third draft, but you all are seeing it the first time, so we're calling it draft number one. And we're going to hit the highlights here. You know that we're going to have our budget meetings coming up, and then we'll have our public hearing. Still lots of time to talk about it, but let's go through these highlights. Just kind of starting with the memo, our recurring revenues, as we always do, budgeted 90% in your budget, and that's your sales tax, use tax, franchise tax, gas excise tax, tobacco tax, alcohol beverage tax, all of those taxes. This number includes your restricted sales tax, which we use for the street, for the street bonds and the water piece. So, all of that budgeted 90%. If those come in, if those revenues come in consistent with what we've seen this year, 100% of what we've done this fiscal year, that will generate an additional $135,000 and some change, but $135,000 is a good round number to use. Revenue-wise, on the PMA side, we have utility rate increases in this budget for water, sewer, and garbage. That's 2% for those three services. That will generate about $53,000. There are no electric rate increases included in this budget. We have, for the employees, a pay rate increase, 3.5%, and that will be all full-time and part-time at the discretion of city manager. And you all just talked through the healthcare, that 10% increase that we, that you all had the presentation on last meeting, that's also included here, that's an additional $90,000, $91,000 included in your budget. So, increase in personnel is 108 for the raises, 91 for the healthcare piece. Lots of capital outlay requests. This is something that Mary's worked through several times, and this is where you all are going to have a lot of input. And as you can see, I've kind of summarized in your memo just the totals, and I want to refer you to some pages. For all the general fund, that first section, all the general fund capital outlay requests are detailed on page nine by department. All of the PMA capital outlay requests detailed on page 17. So, looking at that memo, the first column is that original request, that's what department heads said that they need or want to make sure, and they need or want for their department for next year. That second column is what is included in this budget, the proposed funding that we've done. And there's still some room to play there. Specifically related to the street department, there are some, lots of requests in the street department. So, kind of going through and getting your roles prioritization on what you would like to see done and how you'd like to see that follow up. Also, several vehicles were requested as part of the budget. You'll see those detailed by department. Mary and I working on getting some maintenance costs and department heads on existing vehicles so that there can be some justification whether we do need the vehicle, we don't need the vehicle, can we make what we have work? So, that is not in your budget, that's something that we will have for the council sessions. One other item of note, before we look at the summary, is cemetery.[1752.02] Cemetery has not been something that we've spent a lot of time on in the past. And in your budget for fiscal year fifteen, we've got a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars that we have to pull from other, other funds in order to fund the cemetery. And most of that's coming from the cemetery care, the other piece is coming from the PMA, a smaller piece from the PMA. The issue arises, the fact that we are using all of our cemetery care fund money. So we will utilize all of that money, about a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, that will make that zero next year. That means that your PMA, your general fund, you're going to have to find another source for your cemetery funding fiscal year sixteen. So it's not a current year issue, it's something we need to be thinking about for sixteen, so it doesn't come up on you. Questions on summary? Okay, just to go through the numbers real quick, sorry for the.
I have a question.
Yes.
On your sewer department.
Okay.
They want.
Can you give me a page number real quick?
I'm on number two.
Oh.
They requested, uh, over two million, and we're giving them a hundred and ten.
I'd refer you to the detail that.
Which starts on page seventeen.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering, there's a lot of difference in that, and I know our sewer needs a lot of work, and I was wondering about the difference in that.
So if you turn to page, it actually starts on page eighteen, you'll see some of the things that, um, were requested as part of the sewer. And five hundred thousand dollars for, um, an upgraded bar screen and grit removal, which we've said that we would look at long-term financing for. And a new digester at Thicner, and we've talked about looking at long-term financing for. Some, there's two items there that are six hundred thousand dollars, and a truck hoe and the vector truck. And you've got three hundred thousand for a new facility. So I think there's probably some request in there that we could prioritize, maybe put on a five-year plan. And I think, and that's what Mary and I talked about as far as, um, what to include as far as actual needs for fiscal year fifteen. And then maybe the rest are a five-year plan kind of idea. But the department heads will be at council sessions, so they can explain, they can explain where they were coming from or what their needs were when they put those numbers down.
Well, the only thing I'm thinking about is if we put it on a five-year plan, then next year they're gonna have other things that are broken down, and we're gonna add that on to it. It just doesn't seem like we're ever getting out of the red, see what I'm saying?
I think, no, I, what I think on a five-year plan is you've got to be able to manage your department. You've gotta be able to not look just in the current, you've gotta be able to think forward. So using that five-year plan, yes, there's going to be little hiccups, there's gonna be emergencies, which is why we don't spend all of the money that we have, right? That's the reason we try to keep some reserves. So you, you budget for that, you make a plan for that five-year, and then as those hiccups come along, you have some cash set aside that can, that can help fund those whole emergencies. And, but I think a five-year plan is extremely important to make sure that a department, um, is constantly looking forward. Trying to look at a new facility, or a new digester, or a vector truck, whatever it is. So I think that's an important part of the budget process. Other?
Comments?
I have lots of questions, but I'll wait till Heather.
Absolutely. And, and if you wanna ask before then, just so you can prepare, call me, call Russ. I know more the details, he knows more big picture. Okay, or you can call Mary, she's actually city manager.
Any other questions, Merida? Oh, you got some more comments?
Tom, talk.
Just, no, I just wanna go summary real quick. If you'll just go back to that very first summary page, just so you can see. When you're at home, I know you all like to read these on Friday nights, so. Just kind of a reminder, you've got your legal entities listed, your general fund, your utility fund, your airport, all of those separate legal entities, your special revenue funds, which we track those revenues and expenses separately for certain purposes. Your beginning balance, um, that's an estimate, that is what we expect to start the year with. Okay? In all of these cases, we're starting with money, which is fantastic. And revenue column, what we're expected to bring in. Expenses, what we're expected to spend. Net change, that is, if you're looking at a for-profit entity, that's what you would think of as net income. Okay? So ideally, brackets are bad, right? When you look at that, brackets mean loss, okay? Then you're in the balance, that's what you're projected to carry forward, starting for fiscal year sixteen. So, um, all the way at the bottom, this budget shows that the city will make two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars next year. And I will, I will caution you that there are, there are capital projects in here that I think you all, um, are gonna wanna look at and consider adding, and management is gonna want to, um, consider making, um, some changes for that. So that's kind of the big picture, two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Can't play with all of that, but there is a little bit of funding right there for some capital projects.
Just a couple of comments that I have. Prior to the May fifteenth meeting, you'll get a, a notebook, and it will contain this in addition to copies of all of the departmental requests and all their justifications. So you'll see everything that we've seen, it'll have a copy of. And I think that's important, uh, you know, so that their, um, you know, their requests are looked at, uh, you know, the same as we've looked at them. And, uh, they will also be at the council meeting. And, uh, we can do presentations, or if you wanna just ask questions, it's, it's really up to you how you wanna format it, that they'll be there, uh, you know, to, to be available. And, um, and I would say that while this is a proposed budget, those of you around this horseshoe are the ones that have the final authority and the final say on what's included in the budget. And I certainly respect, uh, you know, that, the procedure that is provided for. And, uh, would welcome your comments, so that we're, you kinda have open discussion and that we can, uh, provide you the information that you need in order to make those decisions, so. Uh, if we had all the money that we needed, we could just, you know, bless it and, and move forward. But, uh, but we don't, and, uh, so if there's questions that we can help you with, or if there's things that you don't see in here that you thought were going to be in here, you know, there's that too, so. Uh, so feel free, and, you know, I wanna encourage open communication.
Oh, come on, smile. It's my favorite time of the year.
Too easy for you.
Thank you, Merida.
Yes.
We, uh, the, uh, draft budget, and we'll have some meetings scheduled for the fifteenth, and that's when we'll grill them. And, uh, I might say to those watching on Penn and, and our friends here with us, do not hesitate to, uh, contact the city if there's any concerns about this budget.
I've already gotten called on it.
Me too. Uh, any new business to bring forward to the council? Any new business? That's item nine. Item ten?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Well, motion and second, go talk, please.
Striller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Rocksway?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
That's just a little bit shorter than mine.
Yeah, it's a little bit better.